Thank you, Dan. Real quick, what we're going to be doing now is we're going to be ahead and open it up with the Board of Adjustment Meeting for today, Wednesday, February 12th. With that Board of Adjustment meeting, first thing we're going to do is call to order. At this time, first off, what I'd like to do is start with a Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. Thank you. Next, Ray, if you would, roll call, please.
Thank you. Chair Trujillo.
Yes, here.
Vice Chair Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner Ugly.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Hours.
Here.
And Commissioner Hatch.
Here.
Thank you. That concludes roll call.
Thank you, Ray. The first case is case number BOA Tac 01, Tac 20, or 2025. This is a request to appeal the Planning Director's decision to prohibit the construction of a retaining wall with the public right-of-way and approval of a variance to reduce the required minimum pavement width for a residential street from 28 feet to 24 feet for ZIL at Jackson Creek. This is a public hearing. At this point, I defer to staff, if there's any additional information, and then open it up for public comments.
But, thank you. So tonight, you're hearing a request for appeal specifically for case number 1, 2025. It's a request to appeal the Planning Director's decision to prohibit the construction of a retaining wall within the public right-of-way and the approval of a variance to reduce the required minimum pavement width for a residential street from 28 feet to 24 feet for ZIL at Jackson Creek. Okay, so can everyone see the presentation on your screen and then the audience can see it on their screen?
Yes.
Okay. So first of all, through, with the Board of Adjustments, an appeal to the code is a public hearing. So the public notice has been provided in accordance to Chapter 18, Section 1801, 260, for this case. The applicant's name is David Duncan. He's here in the audience today. He's with Dobby Development, also known as ZIL for Living. The location of the property is at the southeast, southeast corner of Higbee Road and Bostring Road. You should be familiar with another similar case that was just, you had heard just a month or so ago to the, to the west of that property. The requests are for the approval of an appeal to the Planning Directors or my decision to prohibit the construction of a retaining wall structure within Higbee Road public right-of-way. And again, for the approval of a variance to reduce the pavement width standards as defined by the Towns, Town of Monument roadway design and technical criteria from 28 feet in width to 24 feet. The, as it was included with my report to you tonight, here's an image of the site plan for the project. ZIL at Jackson Creek Development is a single-family attached residential development comprising of 162 dwelling units on a newly-platted 19.11 acre property located at the southeast corner of Higbee and Bostring Road. The use of the property and, and the proposal that's before you today is not in question. This isn't, this, the use that's proposed complies with the zoning for that district as well as the comprehensive plan. So we're not questioning that tonight. We're specifically looking at the two requests that the applicant is making. All right, and just in case, so you're where to, our attorney Doug is, is online. So if you do have any questions, he is available. I know he's usually sitting right here, but he's not here tonight. Okay, so this next slide is, illustrates the retaining wall that's located to the north side of this property within the newly-acquired right-of-way for Higbee Road. So the red is, the red in this image is the proposed retaining wall and the blue dash lines. Hey, I just wanted to let the commission know, those are touchscreens. If you see a small thing, you can actually pinch and spread out to see it if it's too small for you to see it. Thanks, Will. The, and then the, the blue dash line is the, the property line. If you recall, the right-of-way was 70 feet in width and with the property owner and this, and the developer at tow, we were able to acquire an additional 30 feet from the, the property owner to increase the width of Higbee Road right-of-way to a total of 100, which will accommodate the upcoming road improvements. The retaining wall in question is located within that right-of-way. First of all, I mean, we're entertaining a request from, from the developer to put the retaining wall in the right-of-way. As my letter indicated in your packet, I'd inform them that we really don't have the, the ability to provide approval for additional work in the right-of-way. And specifically, the second, the section that outlines the powers of the Board of Appeals doesn't give you the ability to waive or provide approval of a retaining wall within the right-of-way. This is really an activity that would have to occur at the, at the town council level and would be, would be a different process. But we're entertaining this discussion tonight, just to give them the opportunity to speak. And I would further, what I further said in my, in my report is that staff has recommended, and I specifically recommended denial of the applicant's appeal to, and, and ask them to remove the retaining wall from the Higbee Road public right-of-way based on the following findings of fact. The appeal to allow a retaining wall to be located within the public right-of-way is not within the purview of the Board of Adjustments and powers and duties as outlined in the Development Code. The appeal to allow a retaining wall to be located within the public right-of-way does not address specific conditions in detail, which are unique to the applicant's land and does not, that do not exist on other lands in the same type of zoning district. And the last is the manner in which the strict application of the provision does not deprive the applicant of reasonable use of the land in a manner equivalent to the use permitted other landowners in the same zoning district. The next, the next appeal or variance that they're asking for is the road network that's, the private road network that's, you'll see throughout the site. It has a pavement width of 24 feet and in most places, I think there are some other, some areas that are greater, but for the most part, they're, the smallest amount is at 24 feet. The, the roadway standards, which were adopted and then later revised by a town in 2013, or I'm sorry, 2013, set a standard for both public and private roads to have of this type for residential use to be no less than 28 feet in, in pavement width. So that'd be the front of curb to front of curb. And then the curb would be an additional, additional distance back. You'll probably note that I, you should note that that, that was outlined in my letter to the developer and that was included in your report. While it's been brought to the staff's attention that there are existing residential roads in, in the area that do not comply with the Town's approved standard, this does not justify creating a substandard roadway system that may result in slower response times for public safety services by police and fire, resulting in a development that is detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. Therefore, staff is recommending that the applicant's request for a variance to decrease the minimum pavement width from 28 feet to 24 feet be denied, subject to the following findings of fact. The grant of a variance will reduce the town's ability to provide public safety services to the residents within the proposed development, thus being detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare of the development and the Town of Monument. The manner in which the strict application of the town's minimum roadway standards does not deprive the applicant of reasonable use of the land in the manner equivalent to the use permitted other landowners in the same zone. Specific conditions in detail are not unique to the applicant's land and do not exist and other, and do not, do exist on other land in the same zoning district. And last, the applicant can derive a reasonable use of property without a variance through reduction of units and change of development type within the uses allowed for it, for the subject zoning district. So with that, staff is recommending a motion to deny the Planning Commission Resolution Number 3, 2025, which is included in your packet. It's a resolution approving the appeal to construct a retaining wall structure within a public right-of-way and a variance to reduce the minimum required pavement width from 28 feet to 24 feet for Jack, ZIL at Jackson Creek, subject to the findings of fact provided in the staff report. Board of Appeals is final. This does not go to council. So your decision tonight would be the final decision and the applicant would have to take that, take that result and proceed accordingly. So with that, I, I can turn the table over or release the floor back over to the applicant so they can make their presentation and then I'm available for any questions.
Yes.
There we go. Is that working? Great. All right. We have some information to share with you tonight, but first I'd like to talk a little bit about the process that this project has been through up, up until this point. And so we're just firing up a little, little presentation here. But back in April of 2023, we, we started this, so just about two years ago, we started this process with an application to the, to the Planning Commission. And then in November of 2023, the Plan Commission approved a plat for the, for the property. And then, and then we had to go to town council and it was in June of 2024 that, that council approved the plat for the property. And then we subsequently recorded, recorded that plat and that plat dedicated some right-of-way along Higbee. When we first talked to the Plan Commission in 2023, the right-of-way was, it was an additional 20 feet. And then when we went to town council, the right-of-way got wider. And so, and during this, this whole time, and David will talk, talk about it a little bit, we were working through with, with the Tribe View District to design Higbee Road and working with the, the, the pub, the school. Those are, so I, I'd like to tell you a little bit about the, the project. And, and I know that's really not the purview tonight, but you know, we're, we're really excited about it and we think it fits in well with the, the context of, of the neighborhood and, and the town. And so what it is, it's, it's a wellness community. And so it's 162 homes, paired, paired villas, so duplexes on 19 acres. So well below the, the density, the maximum density. And it's, it's designed to, and will be operated by, by us and our partner, Welltower, which is the largest healthcare REIT, healthcare, you know, REIT, which they, they own a lot of independent living, assisted living properties around the country. And so the, we'll own and operate that for the long term. You know, our pillars of wellness are connect, move, nourish, and dwell. And so when we develop properties and we operate properties, we, we embrace those pillars of wellness and bring those through to our, our communities and the residents in our communities. Moving on to the next, next slide. Our, our communities are fairly unique. On the, on the right-hand side, you'll see that the average age in assisted living is 84, independent living is 75. So those are the folks that are in the Jackson Creek Senior Living Center, which is just, just down the street from, from our proposed project. And then in a traditional apartment building, you know, elevator served or, or a garden variety, you know, in the, in the US, it's 30, 30 years of age or younger. And, and in our projects around the country, we're in that 40 to 60-year-old band. And so it's, so it's, we see it as a very important segment in, in the housing continuum. Moving on to the next slide. So that, that's the age of the folks who live there, but the, the makeup, this, of the folks that live there, a lot of empty nesters and professionals. A lot of, you know, like teachers and, and civil, civil servants will, will work there or live there. And then as well as, we found a lot of single parents live in these homes because these are, these are homes with, a lot of them have garages, two, three, and four bedrooms. And that's typically not found in a, in a, in a rental apartment. So it really offers a different, a different segment. Moving on to the next slide. These are, on, on the left-hand side, these are some pictures of homes that we took about three weeks ago. These are under construction down in Texas. The top one is a duplex home and those have three and four bedrooms in them. So it's all living downstairs, like a living room kitchen downstairs and the bedrooms upstairs. And then the, the bottom picture is a single-car garage with an upstairs. And so you'll have three bedrooms total in that, in that home. And then you have backyards as well. And then just a nice typical streetscape. We do have a, a little video that we could potentially play here. And, and so while we fire that up, you know, once again, it's just, it's just important to understand the context of the neighborhood that we're trying to construct here. So you can understand, you know, what, why the, it's important to, to have these, these roads the way they're, they're designed and, and it really creates the, the proper sense of community and the feeling throughout the community. We've got a, it's a one-minute video that talks, that presents a bit about our, our community. And then, once that's done, I'll, I'll turn it over to David. David's the, the project, project manager and can talk in a little bit more technical detail about the, the, the variance requests. That's a different.
YouTube just decided to take us to the next video, so.
Okay.
Everything else is rated in relation with the amenities, but I think seeing how that roadway is being sighted back.
Okay, great.
If that's a hindrance in relation to. What we need is.
Absolutely. And David, David can jump in there, so.
Sure.
Yeah, we can do it. We got it.
We got it.
We got it. I'm not going to deprive, yeah, don't want to deprive you of the video, so.
Fitting departments.
Home should be more than just a place to live. It should be a place to thrive. So we've built a community centered around nurturing health and social connections. Daily resident-led group activities allow you to create deep social bonds and make meaningful connections with those around you. With cleaner air and abundant natural light, our homes are intentionally designed to support your journey to holistic wellness. Recapture the simple joy of a walkable neighborhood. Begin your path to wellness by joining a community focused on living well. Ignite your passion to dwell well at Kadia, a wellness community.
All right. Great job. Thank you, Dan. My name is David Duncan. I'm the project manager, run development for ZIL for Living here in this project, ZIL at Jackson Creek in Monument. Thank you for showing up an hour early tonight, giving an extra hour of your time to hear our appeal. Thank you, Jim, for the presentation. We, we think it is pertinent and important because we believe this product is a very important part of the housing continuum that doesn't exist in all places. I am also on the Continuum Housing Task Force in Jefferson County where I live. So over the past two years, we've been examining everything from homelessness all the way to market rate production. I'm very familiar with this type of product, not just the Kadia ZIL brand, which is one of the more quality brands kind of in this segment. So we're going to talk a little bit about that. And this, this appeal is, quite honestly, we appreciate this and we appreciate our working relationship with the planning staff. This is a question that comes up a lot when we come into a new market. Just because this type of product and this type of community, it has become more prevalent, but in Colorado, it's still becoming prevalent and hasn't shown up everywhere. There's three or four of this type of development in the Denver metro area. This obviously would be the first one in Monument. So we thought it warranted some explanation, kind of why this criteria that we're discussing is very important. That is part of kind of what makes these communities work. It's what makes being able to develop them and create that wellness and that quality community, you know, able to do that kind of in today's market, in today's environment. As you can see by the next slide on the screen, what we want to point out is that what this community is providing, both is an important segment of the housing continuum, is also that transition between single-family detached subdivisions and high-density garden-style multifamily, that is, three stories and higher multifamilies. You can see, and I drove around today and confirmed it for myself, everything to the east of us is a vast sea of single-family detached division subdivision development, which is great, which is wonderful. I'm sure you guys live here, you are more aware than anybody that as of November 2024, the median home price in the Town of Monument was north of $745,000. So it's getting, it's obviously a wonderful place to live and it's very, and highly in demand as dictated kind of by the price of housing here. The three red dots, and, and Jim mentioned almost all of those, you know, vistas, Alta, the senior, senior housing living there, those are high-density multifamily. One of them specifically for seniors, the, there's market rate. And everything in blue is, is pretty much, you know, planned development, but mainly all commercial and industrial. You guys probably know all this already because you're the Planning Commission. Next slide, please. So. Next slide. Oh, okay. It's going. Got it. And I, I'm sure since you are the Board of Adjustment, you know the Board of Adjustment's powers and duties, but you know, in a legal perspective, it's important to put a slide up and remind that the Board of Adjustment's powers and duties are to hear and decide appeals where it alleged there is an error in any order requirement decision or refusal made by an administrative official or agency based on or made in the enforcement of this title, that title being Title 18, the Land Development Code. Next slide, please. Now, a lot of wordy stuff. As Dan outlined, we are requesting two things tonight. The staff report does a little bit of a curveball on the retaining wall, so I'll talk about that last. But we are requesting a relief from the requirements of the roadway design technical criteria regarding the standards for proposed drive aisles of the plan. The literal enforcement of the provision would result in unnecessary hardship, especially since there are multiple other residential properties in the Town of Monument that have been approved with alternate standards or without the 28-foot. And I think as a point of clarification, Dan, I think it's 28-foot of asphalt with the gutter pan. It's 32 feet flow line to flow line. So really, we're talking about 24 feet versus 32 feet, not the 28 feet, just so nobody is kind of misled on the variance. And there's a table in here that will show you that. We're also asking, appealing the Director's decision regarding the proposed retaining wall in the Higbee right-of-way. It is ironic that where the retaining wall has been planned and coordinated with Tribe View Metropolitan District, who is building Higbee Road, and MVEA, who's undergrounding all of their overhead primary lines along that line. It's been coordinated with both of them. Where the wall is on the plan right now, today, falls within that additional 10-foot of right-of-way that was required last minute at the town council for the developer to dedicate 30 feet instead of 20 feet. It's just an irony that it kind of pans in that extra 10 feet, which became kind of the subject of a delay in this development. Tribe View, Tribe View desires to have the wall built, as evidenced by the letter from their civil engineer and Jim McGrady, who we coordinate with on a weekly and monthly basis. As designed and she'll, and Tribe View has volunteered to be responsible for the maintenance of that wall. So they will take maintenance of the wall. It is absolutely their position that they would much rather have it in the right-of-way than have it in an easement on a private piece of property. The Director's position is that the wall creates a liability for the town and cannot be approved. We don't think that's correct. We'll illustrate why. And the wall is necessary, as evidenced by that letter from Kim Lee Horn for both this development and for the construction of Higbee Road. This is really a chicken and egg. The wall's going to need to be there. It's a chicken and egg thing. And Tribe View would obviously rather the private developer build it than they build it. But if we don't, someone's going to have to build it. That's kind of what it comes down to. The wall does not constitute a liability or a financial burden from the town. The one thing I'll add to this is, we are here talking about the wall because in the Director's letter of, I think it was December 13th, this is the option that we were given on both of these two subjects that we received denials on. Subsequent to that, I asked the Director twice to affirm that the Board of Appeals has the authority to make a decision on this and was told that they do. So it was a little bit of surprise when we came out with the staff report, although that is a subject that, you know, the Board of Adjustment and your Planning Director and your attorneys will have to, I, I can't decide for the town who has authority to do what. But that's why we're here talking about it today is because this is the direction that we were pointed in. Next slide, please. Drive aisle standards. As I mentioned, this piece of property in particular that we have made an application on, one of the reasons, not only because of the wonderful market, wonderful place to live in the Town of Monument, but because it is zone medium-density multifamily, it is zone PRD 10. That fits for this product and this segment, that zoning makes it a by-right development. So that is, is why we're here doing, it was zoned for this type of product. This type of product relies on a certain density, PRD 10. I know, I know. Okay, keep going. There you go. Right there. We got it. Okay. Awesome. Thank you. Apparently, we're just one slide ahead. So PRD 10 is a maximum of 10 dwelling units per acre. We are at about nine right now. That is dependent on, that is why this is a common ownership property. It is not going to be subdivided further. It is not a residential subdivision. It is a commercial property under one common ownership that includes the roads that are professionally managed and maintained by a professional management company. And I think this is part, as I said, when we come to new markets, this is kind of where the confusion is. The Director is pointing to a standard that is for private roads. This is, there are no right-of-ways here, no private right-of-ways, no public right-of-ways. These are all drive aisles. 90% of all the roads have parking along the sides. It is the same configuration as a, as it is zoned, as a multifamily project. Every single, you go to any single multifamily project, any single commercial development around here, the drive aisles are 24-foot wide. wide, because that is the standard under the parking standard, where you have parking on either side of the road. The drive aisle has to be two 12-foot lanes, 24 feet wide. That is the standard that's been applied to every multifamily project here in the town of Monument. And that is why we believe that in actuality, this may not be the correct standard to apply. But if we're going to go by the town's requirements, then we would need a variance to these standards. If we made the roads 32-foot wide, that's not, that's not the community that this is. I've helped design three or four of these. I'm helping project manage this one. They are all 24-foot drive aisles. What this does is it prioritizes community and pedestrian traffic over vehicular traffic. Okay? It meets all ingress and egress standards. We've had a lot of communication with Bradley, oops, ready to go, Chief Bradley here, over the past week to make sure that it is going to meet the IFC, that is going to meet the fire department's requirements. We have received assurance that it does meet their requirements as well. We're actually, as Jim mentioned, building this in McKinney, Texas, right now, 24-foot drive aisles, same thing. So really, we're asking for a variance so that the standard that is applied to this is the same standard that's been applied to all multifamily projects, and it is the proper standard for this community, for this project. The little table in the top, that shows you the difference between what the director is referring to, which is Table 5.8 in the Road Design Technical Criteria, and what is proposed. There are no right-of-ways. Typically, how we handle that is there's no right-of-ways. We'll record an ingress egress easement over all the drive aisles and an emergency access easement, which gives all the emergency services rights to come in and out of all of those roads and provide services. Curb return minimum radii, kind of the same thing. You use smaller radii. This is a traffic calming measure as well. This keeps people where there's long straight-of-ways, people, the wider you make the road, the more comfortable people are speeding, are going faster down the road. The more narrow you make it, the more they slow down. Okay? So narrow roads with parking on either side provides traffic calming, and we emphasize pedestrian traffic over vehicular traffic. This, incidentally, I mentioned that parking code, what we're proposing absolutely meets Article 18.05.245, the figure 5.4 and Table 5.4 of the Town Code. Next slide, please. So it's coming. This lists three projects, all of them in the town of Monument, all of them recent, within the past five years that were approved with 24-foot wide drive aisles, in one case even less, 23.67. Vista's at Jackson Creek is standing. You can go drive through it and visit it. All of the projects listed below have no public right-of-ways. They're private internal drives, drive aisles of 24 feet, curb right of 20 feet or less. And all of these parameters, again, meet that parking code of the Town Code. Next slide. All right, lots of required words. We therefore ask the board to grant the variance to the roadway design technical criteria, roadway standards, and allow the plan to move forward as design, because the granting of this variance will not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. And furthermore, use of the 24-foot driveway widths will act as traffic calming measures, enhancing the character of the neighborhood and public health, safety, and welfare. Strict application of the provisions of the RTDC standard would result in unnecessary hardship and deprive the applicant of a reasonable use of the land in the manner equivalent to the use permitted other landowners in the same zone, PRD-10. The applicant cannot derive a reasonable use of the property without the variance. The variance will not be injurious to the adjacent properties or improvements. The development has many elements that are complementary and compatible with the surrounding uses and zoning. And the applicant believes they are, we are meeting the spirit and intent of the town of Monument's land use ordinance. Next slide. So that is the drive aisles and the technical criteria for the roads, the Higbee retaining wall. Again, I've already mentioned much of this. There's, and the real generator of the need for the wall is obviously the grade or the elevation change. On that stretch of Higbee Road that is adjacent to this property, there is 50 feet of vertical relief from the high end to the low end that have to be accounted for and made up somewhere. Internal street slopes, we've already, and when we have our civil engineer Sanchez here to answer even more technical questions kind of about the design, he's been in charge of the design. But we have done what we can on site to mitigate that grade difference. 50 feet is just too much to make up with just street grades and grading. That's why the wall is needed. It's also needed to support and keep the drainage from Higbee Road off of this property. It's, as I said, it's been coordinated with Tribeview Metropolitan District and MVEA, and the district has volunteered to be responsible for maintenance of the wall. I'll touch on this, too. The wall is designed outside of the clear zone, and that is an engineering term for future Higbee Road and is not considered an obstacle by professional standards. I have a slide on that and I'll explain. Next slide, please. In the letter from Kim Lee Horn, who is Tribeview Metropolitan District's engineer, they said, and I quote, "Installation of a retaining wall is a key element to allow the successful construction of both Higbee Road widening and adjacent development south of Higbee Road. Locating the retaining wall within Higbee Road right-of-way offers benefits to project phasing and long-term maintenance without restricting future projects along Higbee Road." There is also precedent for this. There is a wall, part of the Jackson Creek Parkway extension at 105, there is a retaining wall planned, which is in the right-of-way, and it's about to be built. The road construction has already started. All the plans are approved. The section that you see on the bottom right-hand corner of the slide, the wall is highlighted on the right-hand side, and the right-of-way line behind the wall is also highlighted. That is a clip from those construction plans for Jackson Creek Parkway. So it, it already exists, like it has already been previously approved here in the town. Next slide, please. This is a blow-up of what the director was showing earlier. The wall, the proposed wall is highlighted right now. That's where it is on the plan. It is a maximum height of six feet. So I'm six foot two, so about this high. That's the maximum height that we're talking about for the wall. I've forgotten exactly how long it is, probably about 230 feet long. It's helping make up that 50 feet of grade change from the high point on the right side to the low point on the left side. The low point on the left side would be the intersection with Bowstring Road, where a planned roundabout, that's part of the Higbee improvements. What I mean when I say we've mitigated as much as we can on site is that road that's parallel to Higbee Road, we've put in at about six and a half percent, which is steeper than we would normally do. Normally, you keep it at things about 5% or less, but we understand that there's a lot of grade to make up out there. And so we've made it a little bit steeper. I will add, add extra cost to the foundations of the units to help make up that grade so that there wouldn't be a retaining wall, like a taller retaining mall, and it wouldn't be all the way across the property. Next slide, please. The definition of clear zone is principally made, and our civil engineer will correct, correct me if I'm wrong about this, but I know, clear zone is an ASHTO Design Standard. ASHTO is the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials. It is the main recognized highway design manual in the United States. It contains all the design criteria that is normally used on those. It is what defines what a clear zone, what a clear zone is, is the distance off the edge of the road for which you need to consider obstacles. You need to consider dangers. That is determined by the speed, coming out, vertical speed and, speed, slope, and, speed, slope, and grade, right? And this is how it's determined, really, where guardrails go, where guardrails don't go. That's why light poles that are put close to the road are put on breakaway pedestals so that if a car goes off and hits them, they just come right down. Using that criteria, we've examined it, and on, from the edge of existing Higbee, the clear zone would be 26 feet, the wall is 3.4 feet from the edge of the roadway. And I'm putting up both scenarios because it's really undetermined whether this project is going to get constructed first or Higbee's going to get constructed first. I think both of them are going to get constructed in a very tight timeframe. That's probably how it's going to wind up. But future Higbee, after those improvements, the clear zone is defined as 18 feet, and the wall would be 26 feet away. So as far as a liability, the wall is not close enough to the road from a design standpoint, literally to be considered an obstacle. Next slide, please. Not being able to place the wall in the right-of-way as designed will result in unnecessary hardship for both the developer and Tribeview Metro District, who has to construct Higbee Road. This is an exceptional situation, causing practical difficulty and hardship. The applicant has done what is possible to mitigate the grades with onsite design as required by Section 1803-105D5, but the wall is still necessary. The wall does not create a hazard liability or any financial burden that will be completely paid for and built by the applicant to the town. And we therefore request that the board correct the director's refusal to accept the retaining wall as designed. Granting of these variances will also meet the additional review criteria. The granting of the variance will not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, and will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The variance will not be injurious to adjacent properties or improvements, and the applicant believes they are meeting the spirit and intent of the land use ordinance by complying with Table 5.4 of the town of Monument's land use ordinance. And we have some supplemental slides, if needed, during Q and A to kind of illustrate these points forward, but I can end my presentation there. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you. At this point, Ray, we're going to go ahead and open it up for public comments. I don't know if we have anybody that's online.
At this time, no, there's no one from the public online. It's town staff and attorney.
Yes, sir. And anybody here within the community? Policier?
Good evening, commissioners. Great job, David. I think you covered a lot of the points that I intend to cover as well. Forgive me, I got chill out there today and I'm still trying to shake it off. So, so Mr. Ungerleiter's position is not supported by the Land Development Code, neither as the code is, in its entirety was written, nor as the application of the code relates to past projects, which the applicant, Zeal for Living, has demonstrated, nor by any objections from, from Tribeview, nor the fire department, nor finally, nor has it been applied by Mr. Ungerleiter himself, despite his singular interpretation of the code in this instance to mean that Zeal for Living cannot have 24-foot drive aisles. In the town comment letter dated November 14th of 2024, Mr. Ungerleiter and/or Jacobs Engineering, the town's consultants acknowledged 24 feet is standard. What has changed since then? So Jacobs has been reviewing on behalf of the town for a long time and has a good grasp of the code, and now it's intended to be applied. The snippet here that I show, you can see there was a call out here that says 20-foot from edge of parking. That was the asphalt-to-asphalt, I believe. And so scaling off drawing, this appears to be 24 feet, which is town standard. So at some point in time, someone acknowledged that 24 feet is town standard. The Land Development Code clearly shows in Figure 5.4 that two-way drive aisles have a standard width of 24 feet, but Mr. Ungerleiter will not acknowledge the applicability of the section of this code. You can see I've highlighted two-way aisle width 24 feet, whether you don't have any parking or you have 90-degree parking. So they have some parallel parking, they have some 90-degree parking, and then sections without parking. Mr. Ungerleiter has failed to accept and agree with the various examples of existing projects or approved site plans with drive aisle widths of 24 feet or less that I and/or Zeal have previously provided to him. These projects include midtown at Monument Junction, Vista's at Jackson, Vista's at Jackson Creek, Monument Ridge, and Lot 5 of Monument Junction. There are many more. In fact, we know of no other development in the town where a drive aisle of more than 24 feet was required by the town pursuant to the roadway design criteria manual Mr. Ungerleiter is citing. When asked about these examples, Mr. Ungerleiter has verbally stated, verbally stated to me that he did not agree with the prior planning director or planners approving or recommending of these road widths for approval. However, apparently, Mr. Ungerleiter has no problem, has had no problem approving 24-foot drive aisles for other projects. In fact, since he has become planning director, he has approved at least four projects with 24-foot drive aisles. So how do these differ? I call your attention to the excerpts below from site plans approved by Mr. Ungerleiter, which comply with Figure, Figure 5.4 of the code shown above. So here's Lost Island, commercial development within the Canexus. You can see the red circles show the 24-foot drives. Their main entrance drive above the top, each of the parking aisles in between are all 24 feet. Ziggy's Coffee, second example. That shows a 24-foot drive throughout their development, adjacent to all the parking. Next example is Panda Express, has 24-foot drive aisles. Next example is KFC, 24-foot drive aisles throughout the entire, throughout the entire So we continue to be held to a different standard, and it's not just on drive aisle widths. So Higbee Road, for example, is classified as a major collector. The roadway design criteria manual requires 90-foot minimum right-of-way for, for a major collector. We were required to go above and beyond and dedicated enough land to provide 100 feet of right-of-way for Higbee. The New Old Denver Road that runs through, which will run through the Canexus development, adjacent there to Lost Island, is classified as a major collector. But Mr. Ungerleiter has not applied the minimum right-of-way standard to this development. Instead, a final PUD was approved by the town with Mr. Ungerleiter not objecting or even bringing up this criteria. In this case, with New Old Denver Road, Mr. Ungerleiter recommended approval for that developer to provide 70 feet of right-of-way. How is this fair? Does that make any sense? Another example, you may recall Falcon Commerce Center, filing number four, final PUD, who's just approved by the Planning Commission in December and Town Council in January. This final PUD proposes a quantity of truck-trailer parking that exceeds Monument's Land Development Code. This development was not required to seek a variance from the Board of Adjustments, and it was approved as it was presented to you guys. So Zeal should not even be required to seek a variance here. They're just looking to be held to the same standards as their peers and as the code was intended. As Mr. Duncan pointed out, as for the retaining wall and right-of-way, this is commonplace in the town zone project to expand Jackson Creek Parkway, contains this condition. So I have the same imagery from the approved Jackson Creek Parkway expansion plans that shows a proposed retaining wall within the right-of-way. So Zeal for Living is a very nice project by a first-class developer. I've been working with these guys for a couple of years now, and I mean, it's, they've, they've been put through the wringer, and I really want to see this project come to fruition. So they're attempting to make a huge investment in Monument, and the product should be well-received by the town and the community. So I urge you to think about the unintended consequences of denying this request, which could include higher density as the zoning allows for up to 180 units on a site, and less desirable product, et cetera. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. At this time, do we have any other public comments? Nothing online? Ray, thank you. We close public comment at this and go ahead and open up comments for commissioners. And with that-
Chairman?
Sir.
Point order. It's 10 minutes till six.
Yep.
We have a planning commission meeting scheduled for 6 o'clock. I assure you that the conversation on this commission will be greater than 10 minutes. So how are we going to conclude this and open up the planning commission meeting at 6 o'clock?
What I would say is we will go ahead and continue on, try and finish up this Board of Adjustments as time allotts, but get started with the planning commission meeting, I would say no later. but get started with the planning commission meeting, I would say, no later than six thirty. That would probably be our best route of approval to get this completed. I don't want to leave this Board of Adjustment aspect hanging, obviously, on behalf of the community here. But I mean, obviously, there's a lot of good fact-finding here that we need to get taken care of as quick as possible. Once we get done with the Board of Adjustments, we may be starting the planning commission a little late, folks, those that are coming in simply because we just had the Board of Adjustments. If we do start late, we're anticipating around six thirty, but we will take about a ten-minute break for us to go ahead and break and then come back in and get started with the planning commission. So I just wanted to give the public that notice going again. Thank you. With that, I open up for questions for the commissioners for the aspect of the Board of Adjustments, please.
Um, Dan, is this going to be one or two votes? I think, Mr. Chairman, at this point, I would like to have two votes.
I concur.
Okay. The second question for staff is, I understand the roadway widths. That's pretty clear to me. I do not really understand the retaining wall and what part of our ordinances it's not meeting or what we're defining as a liability. Could you maybe give some more detail?
So first of all, I want to go, I want to just highlight what the Board of Board of Adjustments has the ability to do. This and again, by definition, by code, you don't have the authority to take action outside the property. Second, what I instructed them in my letter, and you have a copy of that, is that this is a topic that would be brought to council. Is similar to the roadway improvements that are being proposed by Higby Road. If the retaining wall is part of that, that would be included as part of the Higby Road improvements, and it would be a different topic. But it's being brought as part of a private development, and that's that's the hangup. If if council and Tribe View were to have a conversation about the design, including the retaining wall, they could come to terms in agreement with that, but they're asking you to do that. And it's under your purview, and as staff, we keep talking about the director making the decisions. I didn't make this in a vacuum. I'm actually working with other departments, the police department and others to make my recommendations and statements, so. Staff is concerned with the location of this retaining wall. As it's being brought forth as part of a private development, I have had conversations with the developer in trying to relocate their retaining wall into their existing property or at their property line. I've gone as far as having a conversation with them about having a portion of the retaining wall structure that's underground running into the right of way so that the retaining wall structure is sound. But that that discussion ended when they made this application. So the retaining wall doesn't have to be in the street. The letter that was in provided by the engineer doesn't provide the detail that shows that the retaining wall needs to be in the right of way. It just says it's a key component, and that's because the grading is substantial is substantial between this private property and Higby Road. We have no, we're not disputing that. We're not questioning that. We just, this is just not the venue to to deliberate and agree to conditions of a public road improvement.
Thank you. That that helps me a lot. Developer on a where the streets are twenty-four feet wide, is there on-street parking there?
There is, and I can answer it because it shows in there, there are there are on-street parking would have with the development, what they're proposing is they've got cutouts within what would be the parkway for those for parallel parking in places. And then the driveways extend out, which I think is what you were referring to for for traffic calming and so on, but that's not how we would, we would measure the pavement width between those bump outs, not necessarily including the parking on either side.
And I I just tried looking this up on my phone, and I couldn't find roadway standards. Do we still have a standard for alley? My house is built on an alley.
We do.
We do. Why was that not used instead of a residential? I mean, I, you know, I kind of have a lot of questions like, did you not have access to the roadway standards? If so, and if there's an alley that fit, why didn't you use an alley?
And we had that conversation, we had that conversation about the different types of different type of standards that could be applied to this in being a single-family attached development with driveways extending for each garage door, we treated it as a single-family or a type-one residential development, and that's why we fit it within that standard. There are other standards that are also could be applied, hillside, this isn't a hillside type of development and so on. There's also multifamily. There's different different standards.
I will. I'll make a comment on this. What other people do around Monument really doesn't matter to this, and I don't even think it needs to be discussed because if people of developers got away with doing something that didn't meet our standards in the past, I don't care how many times they did it. If we have a standard, we follow the standard, not what somebody else was able to do. And I will also note that when you come across this problem, this is not something that you should come and try to get a variance for, in my opinion. This is something should have gone to the planning director and asked for a text amendment, change these roadway standards. And I say that because I'm actually a fan of walkable streets and and more narrow streets, but I think they need to be in our standards, and the standards need to say when it's appropriate to use them, possibly in a development like this. But I will say right now, I I don't want to veer from what's in our roadway standards and.
Thank you. Dan, can you put up the slide that's titled Streetscape Typical from the from their presentation? It showed, or I'm not sure if it was theirs or yours, it was a graphic, it showed.
It's the one with the cutout?
Yes. This one?
Yes.
So my, I guess my question is, where are we measuring the the pavement here and from flow line to flow line?
From the end of the driveway to the other to the curb line at the other end of the side of the property. In consideration, it emergency vehicles, police, police specifically concerned with if there's a car parked in front of the driveway or a moving truck or any other things that are in there. Their concern is twenty-four feet just isn't enough to get around around those, and that's where the standard would have come from. So but that's that's where we're measuring it from and based on the the dimensions that they provided in their plan.
Yeah, and I think just a a comment, and maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, either the the applicant or staff are are standards that Dan has mentioned is thirty-two feet flow line to flow line.
I'm not disputing that. I'm just sticking with the asphalt.
Right.
My comments are about the asphalt.
Okay, but that would be twenty-eight feet.
Correct.
They're suggesting twenty-eight, twenty-four feet flow line to flow line, so if if I'm doing the math, you're really talking about twenty feet of asphalt if you're talking about two feet on either side of flow line. Is that correct?
Our, I mean, what we're saying is, is that the the standard that the planner is applying is from this table five point eight in your code. We're saying he's applying the wrong standard, that the standard from your code, five point four, it should be applied just the same way that's been applied throughout the town in his current, your current code. So I'm not saying that you've changed your code and we're not meeting the new code. We're saying we're meeting your code. It's just five point four. He's he's using a standard that's for publicly dedicated streets with right of way, and we're not building publicly dedicated streets with right of way. We're we're building private streets, private aisles.
And I would agree, that's where we differ. The the examples that have been provided to you tonight where we have twenty-four-foot aisles are commercial parking lots with perpendicular parking, facing perpendicular parking, or even angled parking, but with drive aisles of twenty-four feet and with Ziggy's Panda Express and so on. Those are commercial shop, those are those are parking lots. This is not a parking lot. These are roads. It's a road network providing access to individual homes. The standard itself that we're following is a standard that specifically states that it doesn't matter if it's a public or a private road. These are private roads, so it's following the standard type-one residential.
I agree, Dan. In fact, that's one of the notes I made. It was that I appreciate what you what Brett had had given us, but all of the examples are of retail developments, and this is a residential development, so I think that's apples to oranges in my mind.
I just could, can I point out one thing in my presentation and in my response to the director's letter, I've given three examples of multifamily, not not shopping centers, multifamily developments that use twenty-four-foot drive aisles, so they are residential.
And is that twenty-four feet flow line to flow line?
Yes.
On all three?
In one case, less.
Okay, I guess I would.
I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead. That's all right.
I just want to add one more thing about the director's comment about emergency access. We've already received confirmation from Chief Bradley from the fire district that as designed, twenty-four-foot drive aisles are acceptable for this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would echo what Commissioner Green said that whether it was an error in the past or similar type of miscommunication, just because something has been developed at twenty-four feet drive aisle doesn't mean that we have to continue with that on any any future developments. I'd rather not repeat that same mistake in the future. I wanted to ask a question about the retaining wall. How far is the proposed wall north of your property line? So what's the hardship if you moved it nine point eight feet back to your property?
Tribe Metropolitan District, first first all, Tribe Metropolitan District expressed their desire to have it in the public right of way rather than have it in on private property. Putting it at the property line doesn't provide area for maintenance for the wall to get in front of the wall. So now the yards of the units are backing up right on the wall. So how is Tribe View going to get back there and maintain the wall or anything? I'm sorry.
It's not a hardship for you.
It is a hard, it is a hardship for us because this is getting pretty technical, but it's a it's a segmental block wall. So there is the wall, which is basically CMU block, which goes in the front, and there is grid that extends off behind it. That grid is going to interfere with the storm sewer, which we have to pick up the storm sewer coming off of Higby Road and bypass it through our project. So we're in that little area of right of way. There is MVA is putting in all their primary lines underground, and we have to pick up drainage and run parallel through there a storm pipe to pick up the flows off Higby Road and take them through our site. This is all at the developer's cost. So putting that wall on the site greatly restricts our use of the tremendously restricts our use of the property. We have to make room for all this other stuff, which all right now is coordinated and designed together, to work together. Does that, does that explain?
I understand what you're saying. Yes, thank you. I I guess a question for Dan and town staff. How can we either approve or disapprove the retaining wall since it's not really within property line of the project itself?
You don't have the authority to approve the retaining wall, but you can provide direction or make a statement to them to approach have Tribe View and them approach council and have that conversation with them, but I mean, you're you're being asked to to a technical and a technical analysis and a legislative or or zoning analysis on something that's not under your under your purview. If it were a plan commission, and this was a special, this was a plan unit development discussion, that would be a different story, and we can certainly have those kind of conversations, but this is an appeal, and it's very specific by code.
I got a question, follow up with him real quick. Having said that, we can't we can certainly give advice and counsel to the council our comments related to that. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, Commissioner Ours.
Thank you for your information, everyone.
Our community is managed by a professional management company. Move-ins and move-outs are coordinated so that they don't block, clog everything up because, yes, these are smaller streets. Parking and moving would be enforced by the first and foremost by the management company. We were not aware of that rule. That's obviously something to be taken into consideration, but the management company has contact information for every single resident there. So there's going to be calls made, there's going to be doors knocked on if it's clogging things up. The typical residents that move in here, we're not talking about tractor-trailer, you know. These are compact units, even though there are three or four bedrooms, so people are not moving here with a whole tractor-trailer full furniture. These are usually your max twenty, twenty-five foot moving vans, the U-hauls that people are going to rent. All the driveways are designed at least eighteen feet, so they are legally a parking space. In addition to the sidewalk and the kind of strip that goes along with the parallel parking spaces in and out of there, people will be able to reserve parallel park. If they're moving in or moving out, will be able to reserve those parallel parking spaces, those spaces next to that unit for that purpose. Does that answer your question? Tribe View's Metropolitan District's engineer, which was written at the bequest of Jim McGrady, District Manager. I, we can certainly get a letter directly.
It's included in their packet.
It's it, which is included in the packet. Thank you. I have an email from Chief Bradley with confirmation. Chief Bradley is also.
Commissioner, can I give you kind of a little setup to that answer before I give the answer? So the international fire code we view as a companion to the town's land development code. And we only have the ability to give recommendations based on that code. So there's minimum standards. So for this particular. So there's minimum standards. So for this particular. Development for which I provided turning radius for our vehicles. It meets the minimum standard, right? But one of the, one of the discussions that we did have with the developer is. You know, hey, can you please be prepared to speak to how you're going to deal with exactly what you're talking about? You know, we're, we as a, as a partner to the town, not part of the town. We don't take a position if it's falls outside of the international. Minimum standard and honestly what it's for is access. It's not about creating and maintaining new communities and, and roadways that be within the, the town's standards. Because we're deal with everything from rural private roads, non incorporated El Paso County, all the way through your biggest required thoroughfares.
No, it will help make the wall possible. I mean, it will help make the pathway possible. I believe in the current Higbee plans that I've seen. It's either an eight to 10 foot wide, eight or 10 foot wide hiker biker trail on the south side of Higbee Road adjacent to our property. This wall would be part of supporting that, that sidewalk outside the gate.
Commissioner Hours, I want to hitchhike on what she said. And your response with regard that if somebody parked in that driveway. That the property managers have all the contact information. Been around a long time. There are people that park, they take off and go places and you can't get a hold of them. And when you get a hold of them, they ignore them. So I, I don't necessarily think that that's a good solution. And I think her points are very valid one. And we're not just talking about one. But there could be multiple at the same time because that's the way people are unfortunately in our society. You can, police officer back there, wrong. Okay, I, and I also agree with Commissioner Green. I've been on this commission 15, since 2015. Seen a lot of directors go through here. Doing a lot of things that were outside of the realm of what was required by our criteria. Whatever reasons, and I won't get into that. This director. He goes by the rules. He has good reason for the rules. And I think Commissioner's green. Recommendation to you is a good valid recommendation. If you want the criteria changed. See if you can't get the council to change that criteria. Because. All the points that he made in his presentation. To us, and I've read it very carefully, are very valid points. And I also have concern about 24 foot and. As was pointed out, but we should really leave, we could get down to 20 feet. In certain spots. Between those driveways. The type of people that are going to be living in there. I think it is a safety issue. And I think that the validity of that being denied to you. Is very valid. Now, this project came. I know we're not supposed to be talking about the project. I just want to make a quick comment. When it was presented to us. I had reservations about it. When I've seen what you've presented. I think a project like that would be very good for our community. But it needs to be in a place that meets the criteria for that kind of community. According to our codes. And it's not. In my opinion. Speaking for me now, not for this commission. But I'm saying, I agree with what has been done, what has been presented to us. By the director for all the right reasons. Not because I don't want to see your project. But if you can amend your project so you can have the project and still meet the criteria, that would be great. But I certainly wouldn't be in favor. Of going along with reducing those streets within. The community. Okay. Now, having said that, with regard. To the putting the wall on Higbee Road. Do you recall? We went through quite an exercise. And we were told, and we've been told, and I've read correspondence lately. It says Higbee Road is a high. Maintenance road, a high, not maintenance road, but a lot of activity on the road. There's a lot of projects that are going to be built in the future. And that's why. There was a big issue over. What should the width be? And it ended up being 100. Now, we're going to take, so I'm, I'm, I'm only saying this. Going to, want to take that. And reduce it. And say that future projects won't need that width. For traffic movement. And I, I think that is going to be contrary to what the council is going to agree with. And I would also say this, how far is that? Retaining wall from Jackson Creek? How far is when they hit the?
That's why this is kind of outside.
Well, but what's, what's the distance from Jackson Creek Parkway to the start of the wall?
From Jackson Creek, the Jackson Creek to Higbee intersection.
This whole property is, is, is quite a distance from Jackson Creek. So, yes. Yeah, yeah.
How far is it from the, how far is it from the new roundabout?
It extends from, to, from the east of the roundabout area. Eastward along the north edge of the property, about, I think you said around 250 feet in estimate. So. And again, that, that's a conversation that they would have with their engineers and with council if they so, they so choose to. Agree to having a wall in the, in the right of way.
I just had a question for Doug. If Doug was up still online, I can't see.
He's there.
He's there. Do, do we have any authority to approve this appeal at all?
In total? Like the, the both questions?
I guess, I guess we could pose it two questions. Do we have any authority with regard to the retaining wall? Because I don't think we do. It's not part of the project. It's part of the, the right of way, which is outside of this project. I don't think we have any, any authority whatsoever to approve or deny that.
No, so you could potentially carve it out of the site plan approval process with some kind of condition. That it has to be fully approved by another process. You go up into, I believe, section 12 of your code. So obviously. A different section to what you're used to dealing with, well, I guess it's title 12. So potentially you could approve a site plan conditional on. The wall being approved by other processes. But so you wouldn't quite be approving the wall. You'd be approving the site plan without approving the wall. Regarding the, the second question, the street width. There's two relevant ways of looking at it. Sorry, I was looking at. Let me bring back up the review, review criteria. So you have the, you have the authority to decide if the interpretation of the code is incorrect. And that would be whether or not the director has correctly applied. The residential street standard to this, or if it should be the parking drive aisle standard. Regarding with a true variance as in a variance from the requirements of the code. You're limited to 1801 5203, which I can read off if you want. But that would be the minimum area or width of a lot, maximum height of buildings, minimum front side or rear yards, minimum off seat. Off street parking requirements, minimum landscape fencing or sign requirements. So none of them are road width. And so you wouldn't be able to make it, approve it under 1801 5203. It would just be whether or not you believe the director is applying the correct standard.
Right. Thank you, sir. So that being said, I, I, I love this project. I think it's a fantastic addition to Monument. But I don't feel like we have the authority to. Approve this appeal. So I'll just leave it at that. I think we're, we're digging a lot into. You know, the, the design of the community and parking and, and these other things, that's all great points. But I think when you get down to the legality of it, at, at the base of it, we don't have the authority to do anything with regard to the, with, with the wall. And the second part of that would be, do we think that the director is using the correct code? I mean, if we feel like he's using the incorrect, you know, the wrong code, the wrong standard, then we could obviously do something about that. Perfect. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Agree with the wall, that, yeah, we really don't have any authority on the wall portion. You know, a lot of questions come up, but I mean, those are irrelevant in relation to this case. I do have a question though on the roadway. I'm looking at. What is it called? Polaris? Let me second. Looking over to their office struthers. The community over there is a gated community for private roads. You're telling me that the facility that this is going to be on is in a private location. Is that correct? There's no independent, there's no independent variable associated with the sale of any of those properties. So the entire community is private. Is it gated? So it's private, it's public access, correct? Perfect. That's what I needed to know. Thank you. At this point. Sure.
Corey Peterson still on, Commissioner Peterson online?
Corey? Yep. Sorry. Good question. Yep.
I am online. Thank you. We'll start with the roadways. One thing I was looking at was, you know, we, the town monument has its criteria, right? It's helpful to look at surrounding criteria and see how does it compare? You know, so looking at the city collar springs, we're not the city collar springs, but you know, what does it look like? They do have smaller roadway sections as well. For example. A less than 20 lot residential section. This is obviously more than that, but that is a 24 foot edge of pavement to edge of pavement section as well. And then a high density, single family residential cross section that is a 22 foot edge of pavement to edge of pavement. And then looking at the town monument criteria. There, you know, obviously as we mentioned, there are alleyways and smaller curb return radii that are allowed. So when we look at it from a safety perspective, you know. Does it really restrict safety? Does it come down to then a lot count? That, that we're looking at from a safety perspective, because it's not, you know, it's not an access. Emergency vehicles can access this area. So then what makes it unsafe to be able to, to pursue this roadway section? So. Kind of a few things I've been looking at and, and tossing around. Obviously we have our criteria and that's what. It comes down to is use of criteria and, and allowance of that. Then from the retaining wall, sounds like you can't really do much with that. If that's correct. Has there been conversations with? And sorry if you mentioned this, but if there's been conversations with Tribe you approaching county or the town council with this.
I have had conversations with Jim McGrady with Tribe you, but that hasn't gone any, it hasn't gone forward. So. Not, not to, not be on the letter that was included in the packet.
Gotcha. Thank you.
All right. At this point. Bob, please. Yep.
The reason that we're here is it was. And I only want to out when Mr. Tark, let's not keep making the same mistake. Three projects that I have as an example, residential projects were all approved by the town's planning commission. So it's not just the director, like the town has approved this criteria. In multiple locations of similar zoning, similar product or residential. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. With regard to that statement. Have high level of confidence without discussing it with the director. The reason he asked you to bring it to this group. It's because he works as hard as he can. With developers. To make projects work in this community because we want projects. When there's a big conflict. Between the developer. And him. I'm sure that he brought it to this group. So that he could say. I was wrong because you have seven commissioners that said I was wrong. Or I had seven commissioners or X number that said I was right. That's why he brought it to us because it's a man that also likes to hear. And be sure that everything he's doing. Is reasonable and right. So. That's why he told you to bring it here. The, and again, I'll go back to what Commissioner Green said. The fact that other directors. Have authorized things to occur in this community. That are outside. Or because there's other areas in this community. That have roadway widths. That don't. Match up to your roadway width. Doesn't mean. That his requirement to enforce the code. Is incorrect. And I do not believe it's because he doesn't want your project. Okay? Just, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Danny. At this point, we're going to go ahead and close all comments, reports and community art. But before we go, just need to make a motion. We have split individual, both of these pieces into two. Number one, being a vote, obviously, whether or not the director had applied correct standards for the road width. That's, that's number one. Number two is obviously the aspect of the retaining wall located there within, obviously, the property in the right of way. What I'd like to do is please, if we could, within the commissioners, get a motion for one, whether or not the director had applied proper standards associated with the road width.
I'll make a motion. So I, I always think you should make motions in the positive, not the negative.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I'm going to make a motion that the planning director aired in his requirement that the streets be in compliance with our current roadway standards.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. Thank you. Chair Trujillo.
I'll say no. And the reason why is because the individual roadway is at 24. The other end, the other entities that were approved were public processes for private, for public properties. But it just seems more condensed in comparison to those roadways that are at gated communities. The standard is not, it's null and void. So it's almost a mute point. If there's a gate on it, it's a private property. You can do whatever you want. Once we start having public access vehicles, what the standard, it's written as a standard. What got away, I've been on the board now for eight years. A lot of things have changed and it's good to have somebody toe the line. So I don't think, I think there's, there's that debate, but you know, I don't believe that he erred. I think it's holding the line, holding the standard. So for that, that's my opinion. I vote no.
Thank you. Vice Chair Smith.
I'm also going to vote no, because I believe that the planning director should have and does have the discretion of which standards to apply. And I believe he correctly applied the standards in this case.
Thank you. Commissioner Green.
I'll vote no for the same reasons that Commissioner Smith noted.
Thank you. Commissioner Egling.
I'll vote no, as per the planning director's letter to the applicant dated December 13, 2024. Item number three on page two, per table 5.8 of the approved document, local type road, one roads are required to meet the following applicable criteria and so on. I vote no.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterson.
But yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Hours.
Due to time, it's, it's pretty well made it clear. My vote is no.
Thank you. Commissioner Hatch.
I vote yes.
Thank you. Motion. It ends in opposed. Fails. Motion fails. Five in favor, two opposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. The second one that obviously, when we split this, the next one's in regarding the retaining wall in the right of way. Looking for a motion on that one.
I'm going to try this. I like Commissioner Green's positive take on these, but I don't know if I can pull it off on this one. So I'm going to make a motion to deny planning commission resolution 03 2025, a resolution approving the appeal to construct a retaining wall structure within the public right of way. Subject to the fact, findings of fact provided in staff report. Does that work?
Thank you. Chair Trujillo.
Someone needs a second.
The whole thing. Yep. So just to be clear, well, let me, let me read it again. So a motion to deny planning commission resolution number 03 2025, a resolution approving the appeal to construct a retaining wall structure within public right of way. All right. Subject to the findings of fact provided in the staff report. That motion is to deny the appeal. So to deny the appeal would be a yes vote. To approve the appeal would be a no vote.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Chair Trujillo.
I'm going to abstain simply because there's a lot of variables here that still need to be discussed with the developer in relation to the planning director and within all staff to include your waterways and everything else. I think a lot of that is going to be based off of that erosion control. And I mean, we just don't have that data and I completely agree with you. I think that portions of that needs to be within the city, but other portions, you know, what is the risk inherently with erosion control specifically on that erosion, on that retaining wall? So abstain from the vote at this point, because there's not, I don't feel that there's a lot of information that is clearly defining what are the requirements. So that would be my vote is abstentions.
Thank you. Vice Chair Smith.
I'm going to vote yes, because I don't believe that this entity that is the Board of Adjustment or Board of Appeals at the moment has any authority over making that decision.
Thank you. Commissioner Green.
I also am going to abstain. I don't know if this makes a difference. I do not think this board has the authority to even vote on this. A yes vote to deny would be saying that we do have the authority and I don't think we do. So I also, yes.
May I ask?
Yeah, that would be helpful.
You can't hear me. Doug, can you try, please? Thank you.
There's something going on with the microphones every now and again, a random one cuts out. So I believe your concern is that by voting alone, you're accepting that you have authority to conduct a vote. I believe if you vote down based on a lack of authority, that would be acceptable. To abstain leaves it kind of in limbo. So you, you cannot approve the wall within your authority of having no authority, so to speak. But if you voted to approve the wall, you would obviously then be saying, I have authority to approve it. The other option I did bring up was you could vote to approve the wall subject to approval by whomever would be the approving authority. If you felt that you just had no ability to vote either way, that would be the other way. I'm sorry. I can't tell if people are talking or if.
Yeah, I think we're just at a loss. So the, again, the road, the road itself, the right of way improvements are going to be approved by council. There, and then I approve the permit through a land development permit with Triview, and it's being reviewed and considered by our engineers. Again, as I said before, I'm not, I'm not speaking in a vacuum. I have other staff members who are looking at this and our consultants who are looking at this. And we will continue to, to review and process the Higbee Road right of way improvements with or without your, with, out your recommendations. So I think, as the attorney was saying, that if we can, if the, the ordinance that, or the resolution that you have been provided tonight, it doesn't work. Then turning it down would be an effective way to end that discussion and we can move on. And I will work with the developers to, to find a path forward and potentially have a council chime in if necessary for the design of the right of way.
Could I state my vote? And, you know, based on what the attorney said, I will vote yes to deny.
That's the way Commissioner Smith raised it. It was a motion to deny the resolution that's been presented tonight.
Just one quick point, point of order. So we, we did have a, we had a motion and a second, and we're kind of in the middle of voting now. So we should finish voting.
Yep.
And if another commissioner wants to make another, another motion after that's complete, then we could.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep. No, we're, we're voting, so we're in the voting stage. Vote went, second was in, made my absence. You said yes, yet Ray, we're on who?
We are now up to Commissioner Egling.
Yes.
Got it.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hours.
Yes.
And Commissioner Hatch.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Perfect. Thank you, Ray. At this point, we've got both portions of that complete, obviously, from the roadway to the retaining wall and right of way. Next up for the Board of Adjustments, obviously, reports, communications and announcements.
What did we just do? Have we said that his interpretation of the interior requirements and the code that he made a mistake?
No, I, I didn't, so that.
Excellent. So we were, there were two issues in this.
Correct.
And the only issue that we haven't dealt with has been the wall.
Correct.
And we have, as the commission said, your interpretation is correct of what should be with regard to the roadways inside. That's all I want to make sure.
All right. Reports, communication, announcements, obviously, that closes those two for the vote for the road width and for the wall. Those two are complete. We're moving now to reports, communications and announcements. Board of Adjustments, none. Mission, none. Perfect. At this point, it is now 1845. We're going to adjourn the Board of Commissions, folks, for the public. Right now, we're about a good 45 minutes behind what I'd like to do, take a break for about 10 minutes. And then we'll come back at 6:55 ish. 6:55 will convene for the planning commission. We're running a little late with this last piece, so we apologize for that. I wish to adjourn at this point, and at this point, the Board of Adjustments is now adjourned.